Ready? I thank everyone for coming out here today. New storm of the week. Little bit, yes, it's supposed to be a little bit late. Taking the lead from me. So, this is my 10th delay. I'd like to get back on track. Ms. Martinez, would you please call roll?
Chairman Daigle.
Excuse me?
Chairman Daigle.
I'm here.
Commissioner Omero.
President.
Commissioner Blakenhart.
President.
Vice Chair Don.
Present.
Thank you. I'd ask Vice Chair O'Donnell if you introduce our inspirational motion.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today we have Dr. Neil Friedman. He is the Board President of the Tausk Jewish Center. Thank you for being here today.
You're welcome. Before going into the prayer, I thought we'd have a moment of silence for the two skaters who passed away in the avalanche last week. On a slope that I've been on many times and that my 12-year-old cousin had been on two days before with the Tausk Middle School Ski Team. So, we're all lucky. For those of you who haven't heard, the second young man who died became an organ donor yesterday. And I gave Mrs. O'Donnell some pictures that were sent to me from colleagues from the university. When they decided to make him an organ donor, they put out an announcement. 800 employees and volunteers at the university, like Dr. Omero, had him on the way from the critical care unit to the operating room. The parents were there and they were deeply honored. And I think that we in Tausk should be honored that the people of the university took this step to really honor a major accident. What I'd like to read is the opening prayers, the traditional Jewish prayer for the government. This is actually derived from the Book of Jeremiah, written about 600 B.C. during Israel's exile in Babylon. Sovereign in the universe, mercifully receive our prayer for our land and its government. Let your blessing pour out on this land and on all officials of this country who are occupied in good faith with the public needs. Instar them from Utopia's laws. Enable them to understand your principles of justice so that peace and tranquility, happiness and freedom might never turn away from our land. Please, wise one, God of the life, breath of all flesh, awaken your spirit within all inhabitants of our land and plant among the people of different nationalities and faith who dwell here love and brotherhood, peace and friendship. Uproot from their hearts all hatred and enmity, all jealousy and vying for supremacy. Fulfill the yearning of all people of our country to speak proudly in its honor. Fulfill their desire to see it become a light to all nations. Therefore, may it be your wealth that our land should be a blessing to all inhabitants of the globe, cause to dwell among all peoples' friendship and freedom. And soon fulfill the vision of your prophet. Nations shall not live up sore against nation. Let them learn no longer the ways of war. And let us say, amen. Amen. Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, if you could pass these pictures around so everyone can see them at first light.
I'd ask the other commissioners and the commissioners.
Our pleasure, Mr. Daigle.
United States of America, and as a result of which stands in our nation, Dr. God, indivisible, the liberty and justice of all. Ms. Martinez. Next item, commissioners, please move the agenda. Motion to debate, I guess, second.
Second.
Okay. I made my motion to approve item B, is that correct? Yes. So, I made my motion to remove item B. Second, to that, Vice Chair O'Donnell.
Yes, second.
Ms. Martinez, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhart.
Yes.
Commissioner Fambro.
Yes.
Vice Chair Don.
Yes.
Chairman Daigle.
Yes. I just see Commissioner Fambro come in, so I think he has true enough. Next item is item six. This is citizen concerns, motion to speak. Are limited to five minutes. No action will be taken by the commission. If there is anyone, please come to the floor, state your name. It is item 17. Seeing them, hearing them, we'll move on to item seven. Item seven is approval of the December 10th, 2015 special meeting minutes. Remove rules to second. Motion second have been made. Ms. Martinez, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhart.
Yes.
Commissioner Fambro.
Yes.
Vice Chair Don.
Yes.
Chairman Daigle.
Yes. Next item is item B. This is approval of December 18th, 2019, meeting minutes. Want to recruit? Second, motion has second have been made. Ms. Martinez, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhart.
Yes.
Commissioner Fambro.
Yes.
Vice Chair Don.
Yes.
Chairman Daigle.
Yes. Next item is item C. This is approval of January 8th, 2019, regular meeting minutes. Want to recruit? Second, motion has second have been made. Ms. Martinez, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhart.
Yes.
Commissioner Fambro.
Yes.
Vice Chair Don.
Yes.
Chairman Daigle.
Yes. Next item is item A. Commissioners, this is the consent agenda. Items of the consent agenda have been reviewed for the purpose of voting on all items. When vote, we got into this consideration decision. We have removed item B. So, I'm going to read off. Item A is approval of DWA grant amendment to adjust the components of the DWA grant funded to include the amount of $10,000 for all 1,000 sentences. Thank you, everybody. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and read off all items of the consent agenda and item B. We have a table motion to remove item G, not B. That's okay, commissioners. So, let me go and finish off item A. This is alternative service sentence, Pankow bracelet, and $29,960 in treatment for DWA grant fund in Mexico, DWA grant council, and House County. Item B is DFA resolution number 18, 2018-2019 fiscal year. The resolution requesting to adjust the 2019 final budget to account for five protection grant council lords issued to the following House County fire districts. Rufer number fire district, so the stool fire district and modified fire district. Item C is DFA resolution. Item C? Yes. I forgot my readers are there, sorry. Item C is DFA resolution number 19, 2018-2019 fiscal year. A resolution requesting to transfer expenditures related to detainee claims eligible for indigent fund accordingly. Item D is DFA resolution number 20, 2018-2019 fiscal year. This resolution requesting to adjust the 2019 fiscal year budget to account for insurance recovery check received by Mexico County Insurance Authority for equipment of the Office of Emergency Management. Item E is DFA resolution number 21, 2018-19 fiscal year. Resolution requesting to adjust the 2019 final budget to increase revenues and expenditures of the foster grandparent program and the senior companion program for one-time federal award for the purposes of conducting background checks. Item F is approval of budget adjustment for the Lama Fire Department District Fund Item G is approval of budget adjustment for Rufer number fire district 0206-1558. Item H is approval adjustment for E91 Sexual Communications Fund 0207-0911. Item I is approval of budget adjustment for EMS ambulance fund 0509-1500. Item J is approval of budget adjustment for Senior Program Fund 0219-0112-0113. Item K is approval of budget adjustment for Veterans Cemetery Fund 2449-2560. Item L is discussion consideration decision regarding approval of increase to contract TCC 2018-26 for Silva's Escavation, Inc., in the amount of $22,750.25 for Los Corvus Bridge Number A672 rehabilitation project. Commissioners, you have seen all the items of the consent agenda. I'd ask that we remove item G, we have now. Mr. Cordova, is that correct?
Yes, I apologize for the confusion. Item G is not ready for it to be, so I'll come back with a future view and reference that.
So, Mr. Chairman, I have, I'll go ahead and set a motion to approve the items that have been presented on the agenda with the exception of item G. That will be deleted off the agenda for today. And items K and L that I would like to hear a little bit more about. I just, I guess we'll leave it second, but I have a question.
Second? Yes, second. Motion to debate second to approve A, B, C, D, E, F, H, L, and J, is that correct?
Yes.
Item J. Motion to debate second has been taken. Further comments?
So, Mr. Chairman, I have a question with the item that we pulled off officially from the agenda.
Let me get a roll call for the ones that are in, and then we can move on to the motion further. Okay. Ms. Martinez, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhart.
Yes.
Commissioner Fambro.
Yes.
Vice Chair Don.
Yes.
Chairman Daigle.
Yes. Now, we can have discussion on items K and L.
Uh, K and L, but with regards to item B, we had taken it off officially from the agenda. And there wasn't a motion, right, to put it back in? Do we need that?
I believe that would be proper and that would handle it. So, I would make a motion that without consent agenda vote, we provide it back into the consent.
Cost second, Mr. Chairman. Motion and second have been made. Any further discussion? Here it is. Ms. Martinez, would you please go to the floor and call?
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhart.
Yes.
Commissioner Fambro.
Yes.
Vice Chair Don.
Yes.
Chairman Daigle.
Yes. Okay, now we're back on track, correct? So, let's move forward with discussions of items K and L. We do have Ms. Martinez available in the audience. If need be, we might be able to read this. The heel also, we need to, but this here, put it back to the starting page. So, discussion. Commissioners.
Good morning. So, the budget adjustment before you is regarding Veterans Cemetery. So, our plan is to move $15,000 for professional services. This would allow Tausk County to finish up the design plans. And so, right now, it's all buildings and structures. So, this budget adjustment would allow us to definitely go in.
So, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, just as I said, the second has been made as well. Looking for further discussion, Mr. Cordova.
Just want to kind of update the board on this. We do need to complete the plans. The money that's been set aside at the state level is meant for other purposes. So, we're going to be paying for the rest of the plans out of our general fund so that we can, when the plans are complete, put them into motion, utilizing state capital outlets. We're also very hopeful for new appropriations this year coming forward. So, this basically gets us to where we can spend the state money as it comes.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I just, I just wanted to say that I have a good friend of mine that's a city councilor in the city of Espaula. And currently, the city of Espaula, we are even having, are working with San Juan Pablo to establish a Veterans Cemetery in Espaula, somewhere near the new school that's there in places of college and highways and that special road between Espaula and the valley. So, just wanted people to know that, and that's what they're working on as well.
Any other discussion? Game motion to approve item A. So, Mr. Chairman, discussion has been made second as well. Further discussion? Ms. Martinez, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhart.
Yes.
Commissioner Fambro.
Yes.
Vice Chair Don.
Yes.
Chairman Daigle.
Yes. Next is item L. Mr. O'Donnell, you will present anything that you need to.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the commission. Before you, you do have request to increase the purchase order and contract of Silva's excavation of $22,750.25. Earlier in the fall, we met with Mr. Silva, who was requesting change orders of $75,000 on liquidated damages that we were planning to assess for $18,000. And we met and negotiated down his request for additional compensation, which worked out to approximately $26,000. And so, we're telling you before you use to give the additional money to pay off Silva's excavation for the work on the bridge after we've assessed the liquidated damages and then we took into account their change orders.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I sat through that discussion and negotiation. The biggest ticket item, commissioners, on this was because it was engineered to use existing steel. There was a treatment that was necessary before the steel got repainted. And it was a very expensive item just to get it sandblasted, cleaned, painted. Then, once it was done, there was an additional test that was brought to Mr. Silva's intention, which caused him to have to do that entire process all over again a second time. That was the big takeout. They did take out all 40 days. And Mr. Silva did not argue one bit about the 40 days. It's just the additional work that was approved by W.H. Pacific is what caused the $70,000 up, totally, like Mr. Cordova talked about. I felt good with the explanation, the engineer's explanation, Mr. Silva's. So, I feel this is justified. This came out a lot better in our account than what it would have been. But Mr. Cordova did stand firm on the liquidated damages, because I know there was a question and everything was wrong.
Commissioner Omero, and Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Fambro, this whole process can be justified, there's evidence that it actually did happen?
Yes, and the invoices, timetable was developed on the, with the steel to treat additional time and pain. And then, the holes that had to be re-drilled to match once everything was corrected over there. And then, those holes had to be re-treated, repainted again. So, that's, that's the reason for the delay, and that was the reason for this.
Question?
Who were the liquidated damages, Mr. Silva's?
How much?
$2,000?
Eighteen?
Yes.
$13,000?
Some $30,000.
$7.50 a day?
Yes.
Because, because of the extra time?
Yes. Essentially, we did set a date for completion. That was not meant, we did accountable for that. The change orders that increased the law would have been much greater if we had gotten off the negotiation and the shutdown of regulations. And the date, probably still got a margin, turned to what the final product was.
Any further discussion, commissioners? How many days were they behind? 40 days?
Yes.
Yes.
$7.50 a day?
Right, there was, there was two sets of liquidated damages. There was for the major construction, and then there was for punchless items.
I make a motion, we prove item no. I'll second, Mr. Chairman. Motion and second has been made. Ms. Martinez, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhart.
Yes.
Commissioner Fambro.
Yes.
Vice Chair Don.
Yes.
Chairman Daigle.
Yes.
For the record, I did vote yes. Everybody's voting out there, I guess, with yous, under order. Sorry.
It's like writing checks for the whole month of January, very quick, 2018, till you snap, right? So. Next item is item N, department matters. Commissioners, before you, we have items A to B. Item A is approval purchase of remount of the unit 2748 and run 102,000 of municipal emergency services in utilizing the HGAC procurement.
Mr. Cordova. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, this is essentially what you heard about during the retreat of our EMS chief. It is a remount of this unit, the last remount that we would probably have available to us. We are utilizing the money you received from the hospital for this. And I stopped any questions, recommend approval.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Especially new ambulance body put on the old chest.
Any motions? Motion to approve? Motion, I guess, and second. Any further discussion, commissioners? Here it is. Ms. Martinez, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhart.
Yes.
Commissioner Fambro.
Yes.
Vice Chair Don.
Yes.
Chairman Daigle.
Yes. Item B is a request of out-of-state travel, actual reimbursement for Victoria Romo to attend the agency training council managing the property and evidence room. This is April 30th, 2019 to May 1st in Denver, Colorado. Mr. Cordova?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, the request is pretty clear cut as it laid out. Mr. Romo is arguing evidence tech over for the sheriff's office. And this would just provide her the training needed to be able to properly account for the evidence in the possession of the sheriff's office.
Motion to approve the out-of-state travel of Victoria Romo to attend the training and property and evidence room from April 30th to May 1st of this year.
I'll second made, second, I'll second. Any further discussion? Here it is. Ms. Martinez, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhart.
Yes.
Commissioner Fambro.
Yes.
Vice Chair Don.
Yes.
Chairman Daigle.
Yes. Item C is discussion consideration and decision regarding approval increase for food expenses for the Tausk County Senior Program through the VAT for remainder of the fiscal 1819 year. With us behind us, Amanda Romo.
Good morning, commissioners. This request is telling you for you to increase the food expenses for the VAT. The VAT is their main contract for the senior programs' interest in food expenses. Is that any questions?
Motion for approval, Mr. Chairman. Motion and second have been made. Any further discussion, commissioners? Here it is. Ms. Martinez, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhart.
Yes.
Commissioner Fambro.
Yes.
Vice Chair Don.
Yes.
Chairman Daigle.
Yes. Item D is a discussion consideration and decision regarding approval of contract TCC 2019-1 Triadic Enterprises, Inc. Ms. Martinez.
Good morning. Thank you. The contract, according, was basically from January 2019 until June 2019. The contract was held on for the state central portal. It was approved, and this is basically the last six months of the fiscal year, in the amount of $32,645. Let's have, and we recommend approval.
Move for approval? Motion to be made, and you second a discussion. Second, with discussion, Commissioner Fambro.
Lupit Ana?
Yes.
Is Triadic still working?
Uh, they are. And actually, I do, they have customized some specialty reports that they've been working on. And I know now, recently, with our new purchase for our now exchange, we're going to be adding some options for our courts office, but I'll let them address that. They will be, for now.
But, we're looking at something in the future.
I'd love to find something different.
For sure. Have we made that for next year prior? I know she's been talking about it all four years.
My whole eight years, yeah.
I just understood there was some other issues between you and Treasures. And nobody talked to the assessors or something. I don't know, I heard.
Well, some of the recent issues that have happened is we just purchased a J-Walk, which is basically a pointy click version of our Triadic user-based system. So, it's a little bit more user-friendly. However, some of the departments chose not to use it. Some tried it for a little bit, and some didn't like it. So, they reverted back to the old version. A new software, it's quite expensive. We've looked into it, we've had our visitors come down and do presentations. We can't afford it. But right now, like I tell you, Triadic is working as hard as they can to get us where we need to be. Some other reports have been customized for me, our Jazzman Confident Reports. And I know they're working, like I tell you, with the courts office, they've been working on something different for their various license. And the Treasures Office, they like it. That's their favorite, it's all they ever use, and they really like it. For me, it's hard because a lot of the natural reports that I kind of prepare, I have to put them the way I want it to look, and then just pull the data and then plug it in. So, for me, I'm not extracting the data. I have to do a lot of customization to get the reports for presentation purposes. So, there's a little weakness there for me. But for the most part, I understand that the executive officials prefer Triadic, and that's the reason why it's been there for so long.
Well, isn't it pretty much a duplication of effort between the, when you have to do your DFA reports and then the other reports that are required, and then with the new charter accounts, and then you have to comply with and everything? It's made it very difficult and very cumbersome.
It has, that has worked with the entire process, because when we first found out about the J-Walk, I mean, for the LGDMS crosswalk, I did invite Triadic to all the meetings that we have with DFA. So, they were there first time, and you went to expect them all to tell me. They helped me, and that's how this got ahead. But for the most part, they do have weakness. And I know that they know what it is, but it's just them trying to get to that next level is kind of hard, because they're, they have that mentality of their software capability, and that's it.
I just think I thought you understand the labor factor that we're using to make this work, and that needs to be factored into however we are doing.
Any other further discussion?
So, Mr. Chairman, if we were to go, Commissioner Fambro has asked possibly to bring in this for new software for next year. How expensive is the replacement software?
So, some of the parts we put that, like, for instance, Tiger, they have different branches that you can utilize. So, right now, Triadic is basically all the departments utilize that software. So, we have to specialize each of the components for each of the offices that utilize it, which will also allow timing to grow, especially like the planning department. They can share data between the assessor and the planning department, where they have the issue of the building permit, where they can then track on the assessor's side. Right now, they're not feeding any data, even in the solid waste portion. Right now, I have, I have new assessments. I can't get them upstairs with my department, because they can't feed between solid waste. So, there's the crucial piece that we're missing. But to buy each component is separate, and so right now, some of the estimate costs that come in are over $100,000, just with the financial treasure components.
Well, it was even closer to $2,000 in California to do it all.
Yeah.
And, Mr. Chairman, on that, it does take quite an effort as well. It's something that you planned for around a year transition of. So, I mean, when we step one and then starting the logistical challenge of switching over takes roughly a year to complete it effectively. And it would most likely create some issues for us. So, I think it's still something we're looking at, but we've also understood the importance of planning for it and really being ready to handle that transition.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Just want to say, I don't know, hopefully, these elected officials and the other elected officials, they hold good mind and to get you the right tools that you guys can have across communication.
Change.
To have that change, you know, I know that money might be the problem, but we can, I don't think we would also be stuck on Triadic with their, their turn to do this.
I just think ultimately, Mr. Chairman, well, commissioners, that during the retreat, we hear of IT issues and labor issues and everything, and possibly things like this are creating that. So, as we evaluate things for the future based on what we heard from the 18 departments that presented. that presented, um, this is a step in the right direction. If we can ever figure it out, like Mr. Corvo said, the software changes, it's a nightmare.
All right. Okay. Well, we have a motion by Commissioner Omero, second by Commissioner Farrow. No further discussion. Ms. Martinez, please welcome, call over.
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhardt.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrow.
Yes.
Vice Chair Donald.
Yes.
Chairman Geigles.
Yes. Next item is item 10. There's two items on this of the county manager's reported matters, item A and item B. Discussion, item A is discussion, consideration, decision to support the town of Taos on the regional priority for the establishment of a water well to be used by the town of Taos in Taos County located off New Mexico Highway State 64.
Um, so, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, we did receive a letter from Mr. Galles Arino last week in regards to support for the project that they're trying to take on at the airport. Essentially, they want to dig or to drill in a new well, um, with a cost of roughly 2.175 million total for planning, design, construction and acquisition equipment. They're also hoping to do a treatment system out there at a cost of additional 800,000. So their total plan costs out there are just under $3 million. They're asking the county to support any legislative request they might have or any kind of other grants that they may pursue. The reason the county may be interested in supporting this is in the future, if we pursue our own operations building out there, um, we have worked with El Prado Water and Sanitation District to try and get water. They have had a difficulty finding the kind of water that we would be able to tap into. This essentially gives us a backup plan for our ops building out there. It would be a lot cheaper to be able to tap into someone else's water supply and waste water than to do our own. So, um, I did kind of, I think I tried to attach the letter to your agenda. I wanted you guys to be able to read it exactly as it was presented to me. And I stop any questions or discussion that you might have.
Welcome for, uh, discussion, commissioners. So.
Thank you.
You start, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, why would we seek to spend $2 million of taxpayer money on a new well when El Prado is in the process of drilling a well with a vacant money along with sufficient funds to lay the pipe that would access the airport and our potential, um, oh, not potential, and our, uh, new facility out there? I certainly understand the wastewater, but it seems to me to be jumping the gun considerably, um, because El Prado has every intention of being able to serve that property with money that's already been allocated from the federal government. And if El Prado is bypassed for that very large project, uh, it certainly doesn't help them to survive. I think we all want our, um, water systems that are serving a bunch of our constituents to survive. So that's my question.
It's a long question. We have the exact answer. This is the town's initiative. I feel like the county at this point has not, we've seen good news yet from El Prado when they're drilling, they have not been fruitful. I know this was presented to us as an attempt to cover their needs at the airport. They need to be able to have the water suppression they need for a fire station out there at the airport. They also essentially were planning to do this anyway, even with El Prado's fancy face. I feel the county can support this and support alone for the redundancy aspect that gives us more than one option. We still would like to work with El Prado. We're not going to abandon El Prado's efforts, but if it does not pack out the cost to the county to drill our own well, which is the other alternative for us, is $200,000 to $400,000 based on the estimates that we read so far. As you mentioned, nobody really wants to see multiple wells dug out there. So I feel like, I guess, our, our position here would be to support it as a backup plan. Waste water, yes, the wastewater would be a primary goal for us. If we could tap into the wastewater, that would save us another substantial amount of money in the office building, but, um, to me, it's just redundancy in our planning.
Now, $2 million is a lot of money. There's only so much money to go around. I would certainly like to hear from El Prado Water and Sanitation to see what their prospects are. So the first well that they, the well that they drilled, that too much sand, and so now they're drilling another one, you know, there's going to be a successful well out there and, uh, you know, um, regardless of who drills it, but, uh, it just, to me, seems, seems crazy without, you know, to, to purchase a $2 million redundancy before you know whether it's necessary, seems crazy.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Omero, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I really would love to see this, this particular item on our next joint meeting between the county and the town so that we can ask more questions directly to Mr. Bellis and Mayor Barone. I like Commissioner Blakenhardt have the same question. And, um, do they have water rights? Where are those water rights coming from? How does that affect the county, is my concern?
Okay, understood. Commissioner Farrow.
Um, a little history on this. In the late 80s, early 90s, myself and then Board Manager Mark Fratrick went through the legislature for funding, um, for a well out there because there, what was needed then was the water to make the slurry for the seaplanes for, um, for the firefighting efforts, wildland firefighting efforts. And plus, we do have a station out there, but we don't have water. So we have to shun all the water and stuff and go come into, use the old product. Just to let you guys know, the cost of the well at that time was $119,000 and now look what it is. And we obtained funding and it was taken back from us because of the EIS lawsuit, uh, prevented us from doing any improvements in the area. Um, so that was unfortunate that, that lawsuit actually put a stop this one, but, uh, this was identified as a need for firefighting for the, for the entire county area back in mid to maybe.
Thank you, Commissioner Farrow. Vice Chair Donald.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I would, I too would like more information and I don't know if this is part of the town's endeavor settlement and they are entitled to that money. So I'm, I'm not clear. Um, also relating to a septic tank versus hookup. Um, I think if you, you know, cost out a hookup over 23 years, um, versus the cost of a septic, I think we would actually spend more money connecting to a sewer system. So I just, I need more information. I'm not comfortable, um, with this. I don't know if it's part of the beta settlement, they just need more money. But yes, I need more information too.
Okay. Understood. Mr. Corvo, I guess you know that there's questions that still need to be asked, so uh, thank you commissioners for your input. Do you need to make a motion to table? Do you want to?
I'll make a motion to postpone until we either have a presentation from the town or have a work study.
I'll second, Mr. Truman. There's a motion to postpone with a second. Any further discussion, commissioners? If you're none, Ms. Martinez, would you please call over?
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhardt.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrow.
Yes.
Vice Chair Donald.
Yes.
Chairman Geigles.
Yes. Thank you, commissioners. Next one is item B. This is an update to the commission on various items affecting Taos County. Mr. Corvo has a floor.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, um, as you know, last week was the legislative conference in Sanofi. We kicked off a new legislative session. Um, most of us were in attendance. A lot of things were talked about. We had to meet a few of our new elected officials. Uh, we got to see kind of a, a change of attitude, so to speak, at the roundhouse. I don't know if you noticed it, sensed it, but I certainly did feel a different, I guess.
Beat.
Beat, yeah, that's a great idea. Certainly a different feeling at the roundhouse. I don't have a lot yet on legislative update other than the idea of a rocket docket. You may have heard a lot about this rocket docket. Uh, as I understand, what that means is basically anything that had been vetoed in the past from the previous governor, which had already made it through both sides of the House and all the committees will be fast-tracked in the sense that it will only be assigned one committee. It will hit the floor of one house or the other senate and move to the other and quickly get up to the governor's desk for signature. So that is the work, as I understand, that's being done this week. Our lobbyist did call me yesterday and let me know that we have a few bills that are part of this rocket docket that have been vetted out in the past that are in House Judiciary this afternoon. She's doing the best she can to keep track of all these things. So we will start getting on this track and she, to you guys real soon, see if you can keep track as well of what is moving on this week. Things will move quick. And so as I mentioned, it's nothing brand new, a lot of these things we heard about either through NUC, we heard about why it got vetoed by the previous governor, things like that. Um, after that, there's a lot of news legislation coming up. There's a lot of things that we will be following. Uh, Friday morning, I did attend the NUC lobbyist breakfast where we heard about a lot of the priorities from all the other counties besides all the capital priorities from all the counties. We have all the things we supported in our, during the resolution to support for the NUC. And then also heard a lot of things like road, um, the southern, southeast counties are desperately wanting more money for the roads and they're getting used up on with oil and the tankers and all the trucks that are using up there. So maybe we are in agreement that we need more money from the state for roads. Um, obviously, they want it all in the southeast. We want some of it on earth. So that might be where we have a little bit of a division as we get into the ask, but um, I do still understand there won't be any severance tax bonds for our requests. This year, they're going to be using the excess monies to fund capital requests. So that will save some of the capacity for severance tax bond, allow them to pay off some of those debts for one more year. And then next year, they'll vote severance tax bonds with the hope that their bond rating will vote in the state. But that's one of the reasons why they're rushing to sell severance tax bonds this year. Um, the other meeting that I had Friday, which I thought was a very good meeting and I want to talk a little bit about was, um, myself and about three other county managers, along with Steve Copeland in Graceville, so then NUC were able to sit down with Chief Justice Scott Mura, um, at the Supreme Court. We talked about three main points. Um, the big, first one was consolidation of the administration for magistrate and district courts. We also talked about the probate court consolidation into state courts and then three, um, co-location of courts. Uh, number one, consolidation of admin of magistrate and district courts does not affect us all that much considering we are already co-located. Um, what it does is actually create some efficiencies for the AOC. They will be able to kind of share staff, share clerks. There really isn't a major downside, the concerns of the county managers. And the reason why I wanted to kind of discuss this with the chief justice was, um, we do have leases with magistrate, um, district court, we do not. District court, we are required to provide own space unfunded. Magistrate court does provide us lease monies. My big concern was our lease money is kind of tied to the debt here. We built this building, we counted on the over $400,000 a year received in magistrate lease to be able to meet all our obligations so that I was able to voice that concern. There is no, at this time, um, drive to take those leases away. That's not the point of the consolidation. That was really very clear to the county managers and I feel a lot better about that now I'm hearing that from the chief justice directly. The second item, probate court consolidation into state courts. We heard a little bit about this and I know there's a lot of concern. I believe the municipality voted to not support this movement. It also affects municipal courts. What I took away from the meeting and what was most promising to me is that this is not a requirement. This will continue to be a local option. So if they do allow the consolidation of probate municipal courts into state courts, it's because they have been approached by either municipal or counties asking for that ability. But it's still, at the end of the day, would be up to the county commissioners as to whether or not they want to eliminate the office of a probate court, a probate judge. Um, the state is willing to take over those cases, um, in their opinion, for the good of the county. Um, we did get to voice our concern that not every county feel has the same kind of probate court. Right now, we have a very strong probate court, a strong probate judge. We don't feel that it's something we want to give up. One of the other county managers in attendance was Fernando Macias, Doniana County manager, who used to be a district court judge, he sat on the bench for 11 years. He was able to help articulate the, the concern about fee. We do have a local fee, which would then enable the magistrate, would maybe potentially be a higher fee for people. That was a valid concern that I think we all shared. But at the end of the conversation, I felt very strongly that as long as we have local option and the board at the end of the day still has the option to be able to make the decision or not, the question that's being asked to be taken to the voters is simply to allow for this to happen sometime in the future if the local body chooses to make that option. We're one of the last states to do this, to have this kind of consolidation of both magistrate and district as well as probate. Um, so it was good to hear directly from the chief justice that this is in terms of efficiencies for the courts, but it's not trying to impose direct mandate onto us.
So I'll second the questions you guys have.
I have a question. In the, uh, New Mexico county's board, we did, it was put best by Commissioner, or it's top tip of the local county, and we looked right at Daniel Ayasoto, Senator, and basically told him to mind his own business on, this is not a real bill. I didn't hear any support in the board meeting for this and why, I mean, this is the same thing that came up with trying to tell municipalities how to run their elections. I, I just think there's a lot more out there that needs attention in this. We have an unbelievable probate judge that works well over clerk's office, which is exactly what it's supposed to be. This is a service to our citizens that I would fight to continue.
Any other comments? Discussion, commissioners?
The third issue doesn't affect us. I just have a question and you might have to address it, but please go ahead. Um, the third issue is not so important to us as it's a co-location of courts and we've already done that. So we actually refuse as an example of optimism, how well it can work when you have magistrate, district and state building. Um, also how well it works when you're next to your administrative building with your probate next door. So, I mean, in that case, we are actually ahead of the curve in regards to providing one-stop shop, so to speak. So that wasn't as big of an issue for us. Um, besides those three points that were really specific to the counties, um, the chief justice did ask us to provide his literature in support of their legislative requests for their budget. The judiciary has been cut over 30% over the last eight years. Uh, they really felt that they were targeted under the previous administration. I mean, they basically said that and the numbers do show that. So within the second year of the previous governor's, um, administration, you start to see the really deep cuts and those deep cuts maintained all the way through to last year. At this point, they're 30% down from where they started eight years ago and they're asking for support to kind of backfill that budget efficiency. You hear a lot of backfilling, talk about things like this. We do know that the courts are stressed. So our DAs, a lot of these, um, judiciary units have been cut to the bone. Um, personally, my opinion is that it does help for efficiencies. I feel they're trying to find efficiencies, but on the other hand, they really cannot clear out the backlog. There are things that were brought to their attention past the three main points. I will give Mr. Macias a lot of credit for being able to articulate the problems with the counties as a judge to a judge. And I felt we got a lot of, um, progress in things like, um, pre-trial issues, um, the no bond hold issues, the lack of communication between the AOC and our county jails. And I really was positive, hopeful that the chief justice had about a page and a half of notes that she felt were important to communicate to the other district judges around the state to hopefully help us with some of the issues that we face as county jail based on the decisions made by the district courts. So it was great to have a judge be able to speak to a judge, uh, myself, the other manager kind of jumped in with numbers as appropriate and kind of able to explain what their decisions passed us when they need a decision on our behalf. So, yeah, overall, it was a positive meeting. I hope that we have continued meetings with the chief justice. Um, she was very open and I appreciate it. We had over a two-hour meeting with her. So to get that kind of time with the chief justice really felt like she was listening to us. We did have a good dialogue and like I said, a page and a half of notes that she felt are really important to start addressing some of our issues. Um, I was talking to our retention initiator earlier. I, I'm hopeful that maybe not any, but within the next six months to a year, we'll really see some relief in the additional pressures that are put on us based on decisions of the judges, that they may not just know what kind of pressure they're putting on us. So some of the requests in the budget is for someone that's going to be a pre-trial administrator, just running pre-trial initiatives throughout the state, something that they admit that they were behind on and they were actually caught by this constitutional amendment that took place last year, the same one. The same thing were all caught by it. It really wasn't logistically thought out. And so it was put into action without having a true plan and they admitted that. And the Chief Justice is working to fix that. They also want to hire more staff. They just need to be able to stack up each district court appropriately. There's certainly that case of, they also need more training. Chief Justice has admitted that she doesn't even have the ability to train her judges appropriately on case management, which is a huge factor. They need to be able to better manage their case though, to help us with some of the ramifications we get. When you have somebody that's ready to go to AOC and they sit in our facility for nine months, because district court can't properly schedule the hearing for their sentencing, that affects us. And she heard that. She also already knew about that, but that's one of the big initiatives. But once again, in her opinion, it comes back to being fully funded and getting the money they need. So that was the request that she asked me to convey back to the board is to please support where we can funding the judiciary of our state government at a level that's substantial enough to let them do their job appropriately. So I'm bringing that back to the board and may stand for any questions you might have on that meeting.
Commissioners?
It's not specifically on that meeting, so are we taking down? Are you finished?
That's all I have from this. Do you have any other questions about conference?
Definitely understand the need for case management, making sure nothing slips through the cracks to the planning organization, how many broken government. So is there ever been a lot there to raise Taos County taxes for school district expenditures? I mean, I heard.
It's on the website of the school. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. It's on Taos School's website.
I have not heard of a specific deal, but something I'll have to look into. I thought it was a valid measure that they were proposing.
That's always one.
So it's not a good deal? As I understand it, it means that they have the ability to have a special election and take that question up to the voters on their own, without going through the county and piggybacking on one of our elections. So it is going to cost the taxpayers the additional money to have the kind of special election that's required and the clerk can find out. If I get this wrong, it's a mail-in election. It does have an additional cost and that's what they're trying to kind of do to make sure that they can continue the mail-in that's been given to the schools. I think it's important to mention, and I may not be confident in mentioning this, they do very clearly state that it will not raise taxes if we approve this again. But it's also true that it could get over taxes and it's not. And I think that clarity just needs to be made for the voters that if they want to continue this tax, yes, it's not going to be a major increase and the schools will continue to get revenue. But if for some reason the valid measure fails, it can get over taxes.
Is it a mill or is it a half cent?
It's a mill. This is a property tax. This is a property tax on top of the half cent that only Taos County gives to our schools.
And currently, there is one mill, two mill that is being assessed.
I do not have the exact answer to that. I'll give it to you in a minute.
Thanks.
Okay, further questions for Mr. Corbin? There are none. Thank you, Mr. Corbin, for your presentation. For question 11, this is the Commissioner for Reports and Matters. We have I A, through the test. I A is discussion selection of a member to serve the Holy Cross Hospital Board of Trustees for one year. Mr. Corbin?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, so I think the day after, two days after our last meeting when we did all of our other appointments, they did a request from the hospital, not necessarily to ask us to please appoint a member of the board to be on the nominating committee for next year's hospital board vacancies. I believe last year, Commissioner O'Donnell served on that nominating committee and so I'm asking the board at this time to nominate and appoint somebody from the board to sit on that nominating committee for this upcoming meeting.
Commissioners? The nominees? Is there anyone that's interested, Mr. Tru?
If someone else is interested, I just said someone else did and I did it for three years. I was happy to do it.
If anybody was to appoint me or nominate me, I'll take it.
I nominate our chairman to serve on the selection committee.
I'll go in a second.
Do we need a discussion?
For the discussion, Commissioner?
Do we need an alternate?
It'd probably be a good idea.
I would ask that we amend the agenda and our vice chair serve as the alternate. Ask for that amendment. You voted on the project?
Mr. Corbin, can you repeat that again?
Sorry. I would ask that the motion be amended to name our vice chair, Commissioner O'Donnell, as the alternate for this purpose.
I make that amendment.
You make the amendment? We have to vote for the amendment first.
We're going to vote for the amendment to include an alternate that our vice chair would feel incorrect.
That's correct. I need the second.
Second, by Commissioner Blakenmore, Mr. Montina, who's calling?
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenmore?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Vice Chair O'Donnell?
Yes.
Chair Gayle?
Yes. So we will go back to I A. And there has been a nomination of the chair to serve as the trustee and vice chair to be the alternate. Motion had been made, correct?
Yes.
And selected it, so we will go ahead and ask for the go-call, Mr. Corbin.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenmore?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Vice Chair O'Donnell?
Yes.
Chair Gayle?
Yes. Next to I A B, this is a request for approval to add a body scanner for the adult detention on the legislative priorities list that we've already submitted. He asking for this to be in addition to resolutions that I received.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In November, we were notified through our law enforcement pool that only accredited detention facilities will receive full reinsurance on claims, meaning of the $5 million that is available for coverage on mental health and related costs. Only the accredited facilities will get full credit for the $5 million. That's the only way that we can afford to continue. So that left the rest of us that are not accredited with the original $1.5 million and anything above that comes out of our general fund. So in taking the steps and meeting with Paul and Andrew various times over the last month and then getting a good heads up from Tammy that there's some money possibly available for something like this. And I know that our biggest issue that we have been hearing about is drugs in our jail. I experienced something this morning that just sort of blew me away, the reason I was late. But this is something that we've got to give them the tools. We've got to start working towards accreditation because that's a big hit on our general fund in not being able to have coverage. Next year, if the claims stay the way they are, we're even going to lose that probably first billion and a half that were covered after the original insurance. So these are claims that are in the millions. We don't settle these types of claims. And so one of the first steps, I think, in helping them combat the drugs and the paraphernalia and the contraband that's getting into the jails that adds to this issue and is one of the leading causes of the larger claims that we've experienced over the last year and a half statewide, not countywide. Taos County is doing very good on our claims as I reported numerous times. So with this and discussion with Paul, he can talk to you a little bit about what a scanner is, why it's a tool that he needs to keep his facility safe. And last, in the, there's a range of cost. I don't think we need to go cheap on this. I'm confident after meeting with some people, after meeting with Paul and Andrew regarding this, that we will be looking at the a little over $200,000. I'm confident that that could be appropriated to us and would not severely affect our general fund or his budget. So I asked Paul to be here today to give you any information regarding the body scanner. And I dearly, for the benefit of Taos County, ask for all commissioner's support on this, including amending the resolution at the next time. Paul, do you want to talk a little bit?
Good morning, Commissioner. How are you guys?
Good morning.
So basically Lieutenant Montoya and myself, I was trying to put them around to see what kind of specs they can get on different products, those scanners. So and also I reached out to Danny and I think that is from Sanibel County about, because they just recently should have gotten it in right now, but they were actually wanting us to go over and check it out and kind of see how it works and get the whole just, you know, how beneficial it is to their facility. Because they did say that, you know, this is one of the big things that they were missing is one of the tools to help combat the drug problem that they have in their facility. So Lieutenant Montoya did get two presentations. So one is from OD Security North America and the other one is Drug Guard and it's ADNE security compass. So the first one, so there's drug detection software is from Drug Guard. Basically, they provided the two different prices. One of them is without a dual view, which is just a compass. It's $112,000. The compass dual view with the Drug Guard is $165,000. So this is the first presentation. So walking through it, high caliber metal detectors, good at detecting most metals outside of the body. So one of those things you talked about is paraphernalia, syringes, even weapons. We haven't come across that, but people that have come in, I mean, they don't get past their friends. We found knives in their waistbands, stuff like that. So something that'll detect that immediately having something like this. So no internal detection capability. Millimeter wave imaging and detection presently being used at airports by the TSA, good at detecting items on the body or in clothing. No internal detection capability, backscatter x-ray imaging. Similar requirements to millimeter wave, no longer being used by the TSA. No internal detection capability. So it's a low-dose transmission x-ray imaging, images items in clothing and on body and inside the body. This is the only solution of imaging and detection of a smaller or inserted contraband. So that's one of the things that we have noticed a lot of and we've also gotten some intel from inside the facilities that they're no longer, they're not necessarily, not moving anymore, but sticking it in a cabbages. They're taking it to the extreme of swallowing whatever they're bringing in. So it's hard to detect that in the immediate intake process. So we're talking having to do the dry cell, which isn't always, you know, the most beneficial either because we get waves of detainees that come in. It's that easy to pass off. And, you know, having that kind of information in booking, we don't, we don't know who's coming, bringing it in, who's passing it off, if they're doing this. I mean, there's a lot of different variables that we can't account for. So this will be the first step initially is right away to give you an answer or at least some of an idea if this person is potentially holding. So we can take the better steps and precautions to dry sell these people and an attempt to get these, the contraband. So Drug Guard works on compass. This is a dual view. So you obviously can see it just has a little, like a little thing on the slide to cross the thing and it'll give you the image on the, on your computer with whatever you have connected to. So software capabilities, automatic search of swallowed drug clusters and single packages in stomach and groin area, automatic visualization, automatic scan lock in cases where drugs are found, automatic drug database control, automatic administrative notification in cases where drugs are found. So obviously that'd be something that'd be really beneficial if I was notified that there was something potentially found that we can, you know, obviously work with, you know, the DA's office or the Sheriff's Department, see if we can get, you know, a search warrant. We can get them sent out, you know, and the hospital will do their part or however they need to. And then we can also get these people charged. Because that is one of the big things, we need all these people accountable that are attempting to make these kind of, you know, whatever their purpose is, for personal use, to make money, you know, for their gains, whatever their purpose may be. This is something that holds them accountable and it kind of encourages them to wanting to obviously try and bring contraband into the facility. So the automatic drug detection algorithm, the execution algorithm starts once an image is acquired and displayed on the screen. Once the execution of the algorithm is over, areas supposedly containing drugs are highlighted in color lines in the image. And obviously you can kind of see it. It's hard to see from here, but you see where it's showing those images where those certain little areas of the, what could potentially be contraband. So areas with drug presence, they'll give you the probability, the indication box and the line shape color, which will give you how like in red orders or yellow. The line's color depends on the probability of drug presence. Areas with possible large drug presence are framed in solid lines. Each detected drug container is framed into a shape of dashed lines. So they have a manager panel, the control panel, the scanning panel, Drug Guard panel, and the bottom panel. You can see all that stuff there. So no drugs detected by the Drug Guard. And that basically just spells it, operator. There's nothing detected. Once we know or we can understand nothing's been detected, we don't even have to house them inside our booking area. We can just automatically, based on our classification, move them to the back. So eliminates that presence in booking where they have potential to either, you know, receive some from a different person or power of communication that they get across by dating booking. But obviously, you know, that'd be a big, that'd be a big help for our booking areas to not have to house so many people because then it becomes an issue of housing two to three people in one small cell and that becomes a concern also. So no suspicious objects are found by the operator. So it's press the button in operator's decision window after the scanner is ready for the next scanning procedure. So the Drug Guard indicates 57.21% probability of drugs in stomach area. Operator is insured and tries to adjust the image to improve. Operator is insured and tries to adjust the image to focus on the stomach area. Operator is insured and tries to adjust the image to improve. So you can see how this is capable of zooming in on certain areas of, you know, where you want to find them. So to confirm suspicion, operator makes another scan with torso view only. Drug Guard gives 91.6% of drug presence in stomach area. So obviously it increased, you know, by about 35 to 40% more than. So operator presses the button and marks areas with the drug's location to confirm selection. Press the button after the scanner is ready for the next scan. It gives 100% drugs probability. Operator clearly sees the drugs and presses the button in operator's decision window after the mark. After that mark, drugs, location, and press button to confirm the marks. So a dedicated panel indicating the probability of drug presence appears in the right-hand upper corner of the image. So it gives you a little window showing you the percentage of the probability of there being drugs present. So the medium amount of swallowed drugs gives 91%. Your single packet of swallowed drugs, 15.6%. So that's basically the Drug Guard. Again, the price for just the regular compass is $112 and the dual view Drug Guard is $165. So as I go back to the next one is OD Security North America. Price for this one, I believe, was $118,000, set at $150. And it gives you a two-year full manufacturer warranty. So OD Security North America, this guy's gives you some timelines. The OD Group established manufacturing, medical x-ray equipment. In 2006, OD Group sets up OD Security, manufactures first SODA RS, OD Security. In 2012, North America established headquarters in Texas. 2013, components, assembly, setup in Texas. 2014, RS offered up to, offered in US correction. In 2019, SODA RS selected as preferred system in 30 states. So you can see that's a picture of their products. And there's those little handles and that's where they will scan and it passes between those two sections and it'll, that'll go. Showing now in a second. In a market of corporates, we are women-owned, small business. In a market of foreign manufacturer products, we are the only US manufacturers. In a market with multiple product catalogs, we focus on one product, our SODA RS full body security scanning system. So the most invasive image, the back scanner, the millimeter wave and the transmission. So here, obviously, your least detection and your greatest detection. And you can see the three different editions there. OD Group. So independent testing on full-body scanners, SODA RS, SecurePass, Compass, and EScan. Firstly, the independent testing in North America conducted by independent evaluators indicate in identical conditions for all participants, 120 types of different contraband. So the only SODA RS achieved 100% detections for it. The common radiation exposures, you know, on a daily, we're exposed to, you know, radiation. So it kind of gives you a breakout of, you know, your daily and stuff like that. So you're obviously a natural everyday exposure. You see how much we're exposed to. You see how much we're exposed to. Exposure to granite in the US Capitol building. Sleeping next to human, flying at 30,000 feet. Natural isotopes in stone and brick homes. 15 beds SODRRS level two. So you see that's where it shows theirs is 1.5 USD. 1,000 USD x-rays, 6,000 as a CAT scan and a CAT scan in your head and dental x-rays. So everyday type stuff, this is the kind of exposure of radiation. So it shows you the dose of, you know, the radiation exposures. So it gives you a breakdown there. So it's a market leader in operator safety. This is basically telling you an 18,181, 818 operator scans. It's equal to the radiation of one banana. So that means if I did 18 million scans, it'd be the equivalent of one banana of radiation exposure. So it's very minimal of the radiation exposure. So the focus on added value is 100% dedication to the development of our full body, full body security scanning system. So they have different platforms you can use. You can see there's a tablet every day. There's SODRRS networking, online trainings that they provide. And then from what I understood is that they would come in and basically give you where it would be most ideal to place this for the workflow of the facility itself. So they basically say this is the best area or most ideal area that'd be beneficial to the facility. And after we would look at equipment, so that'd be a completely implemented. But they also do have an ADA platform. So, you know, for obviously for people that would be in a wheelchair or need assistance of that sort, it's ADA compliant. So the American wire gate is reading. So the RS detection capacity is greater by 507%. So I'll see if that one, the disorderous technology, basically this is going to show you how it works. You see in the middle where the individual would stand and they would hold on to those bars and they would pass through. So it shows you the green area where they would pass through. So generator in delta frame generates x-rays, meta lines, delta frame, commits x-rays into narrow vertical curtain beam. So platform moves individual through the beam, software collects data from the dio array and data is displayed as an image on operator interface. So that's kind of just a breakdown how it works, it's as simple as that. And those are the different types of images that you would be able to use by, by this thing. So you click on your neutral, your freebie, your re-boss, your negative, your struggling and your sepia and image review. So the typical workflow, yellow area, various scam represents the radiation zone. So obviously this is kind of taking to like a little breakout of like the booking process to come in, you go through, you start your searches or whatnot. So they present themselves to the operator, their subject identified, is verified by ID number or our fingerprint reader, which we don't, well, we have a fingerprint, but that's for the law enforcement. They go over, they basically go on the platform, they pass through. That's the area where it shows you of the radiation zone, stops anything to the operator. So the subject steps off platform and is instructed to wait in the scanning area. Operator is evaluating the image and confirms negative or positive. So I mean, the fast process for booking, we just pass through, it'll tell you exactly if it's yes or no. And from there on, we just basically make all our classification movements and we go on with our, all our data, all our data stuff. So that's basically the two presentations or the information that we were provided.
So that's what we're looking at. And you see the need, it's health, it's not, we're not getting sued for radiation exposure. We're getting sued for drugs in our jail and mental health issues in our jails. So this is a tool, I feel after meeting with these gentlemen as required, this is our first step. Then we start the accreditation process because we need to get insured.
If I may on the, so as of last year, I was, I was tasked with working on our accreditation process, which I do have all of our folders of the accreditation all put in, into separate folders. And I have presently, up to this date, I have about 78 complete out of 198 standards that we currently have. I understand that our medical provider, the Core Health is, is part of a contract. They are required to provide those ones and that once equals like 48 standards or 46. So if we're looking at it in kind of a, the small number, we're about 100 standards that we're apparently up to par with. So obviously it's just the documentation that we need to get up to speed with and certain other areas. But we're working on that stuff and that's something that we're not leaving behind. But about 100, 100 or so out of the 198. So what about have we done?
That would be my, since we're at this 40 years to bring this up to paper.
So Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Romero. Oh, who gets to go through this system when they enter detention?
So I guess it basically will be dependent on where this machine was placed. Obviously, like I said, they were, one of those companies would provide us the most ideal location of where it would be. And the ideal thought is for detainees. But if there wasn't a way that we can kind of be creative and see if there's a way we can pass our staff, our volunteers and detainees, that would be ideal because that basically is every person that steps into our facility is basically being checked. But it's one of those things is if I can say the biggest areas where we're having issues with is the detainees themselves. Because we've done a lot of, you know, phone, listens to a lot of phone calls, which potentially will help us. That's where they're basically making all their deals right there. They're putting it in their terms of how they want to, who's going to do it and when and whatever, whatever. But I want to say if we could do it for everybody, that'd be great. But I think our population, we're really looking at this, detainees themselves.
So Mr. Chairman, I would emphasize the need for every single human, every single warm body that goes into that facility would have to be scanned because I would imagine that there would be some leaks that would only be otherwise.
Yeah, I agree. There's, you know, I'm all in favor of giving you guys the tools that you need. How about the mail? How comfortable are we? What, what security measures would we take to make sure that nothing's coming through the mail?
So currently our mail process, we have our list with all the, you know, standards that they need to follow in order for us to approve them and to go through. But again, Lieutenant Montoya, Lieutenant Behead, the ones that are doing the mail right now. As far as we go through everything that we come through that shows any sign of, you know, it looks like it had been liquefied substance and maybe put on a paper or anything of that sort. We're just taking a precaution of ourselves, actually just making a copy of that and sending it out in an envelope. So there's no original scent item, you know, the paper itself isn't original. We take off stacks, you know, put it with the lights and all the stuff uncomfortable in it. But again, it's not 100% because, you know, their facility has said that they've even gone to the extreme of liquefying heroin and using the animals as a, as a way to write, so they can write their message in this liquefied heroin and it basically looks like a writing pen. So we're kind of reaching out and seeing if there's, you know, anything that we can find in any information. So if this is something that we did come across and, you know, we're making sure, taking a lot of, most of those steps to prevent it from coming in. But again, it's not 100% because I'm not going to sit there and say it's 100%. But we do look at every possible thing that hanging out from other facilities and outreach. And we get information and emails that this happened, this happened, okay, we need to start looking at that. So I think we're doing a good job, but again, obviously there's any ideas or anything that we can look at, I'm open to hear those kind of, that kind of stuff. Because it only helps us, yeah.
The guy I talked to in Santa Fe, I can't remember which detention center he ran, but, you know, he says they feel each one of them as best they can. And then if there's anything suspicious, they open them up. They can't do that if it's from the attorney. But if they feel through one that says it's from the attorney, but it feels suspicious and they call the attorney. And sometimes the attorney says, I didn't send that mail. And then they're able to open that one also and they have been finding drugs.
Absolutely. I know we've talked with Angela and Abel from the Public Defender's Office about that. And they basically gave us a breakdown of how they send theirs. They have delivered theirs. So there's, if anything that doesn't come via hand delivery from them, it's in question. So everything like that that comes through us, it is in question. Even Tripo, we had one come through recently that apparently the people that were supposedly sending it didn't even know it was being sent. So it was one of the things, law information that comes from their attorneys, we open it in front of them and we can go through it. We're not to read it in depth. We're supposed to just kind of skim through it, pass it away to the lid, those staples, those paper clips, looks good and then we give it off. We're supposed to have a presence and the community.
Right, for the legal stuff. But have you opened any personal mails?
Oh, we do that every, everything that's outgoing, we didn't open. So we open it, you know, they can feel it, they'll go through it. And I mean, knowing these guys, they're really, you open it, you look at it, you try to see something in question. And it's not, you know, that hard to see, but you know, it's, it has its chance of being bought.
And have you found drugs?
We have found some oxygen come sealed in the corners of, you know, where you seal it. I mean, obviously liquefied, it looks like it was something liquefied and the paper was dampened or something like that. One that we have that looks like a question is maybe if they're liquefying it and then using something to seal the, you know, part of the envelope. And it's, you know, looks totally different from the actual just leaking of it or using water to seal it. It has a different color and everything. So again, we're just taking those precautions. We'll send out an envelope, we'll make a copy of whatever letter was sent, even cards. We'll just make a copy of whatever they wrote inside it and send it that way. I mean, sometimes it's, it's just that it's better that we take that extra step if you're then something of that sort coming into the facility. So.
Thank you.
Commissioner, Vice Chair, Romero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So it seems like this is needed, however, where are they going to put it? Because you know there's no room in booking.
Yeah.
There's no room, maybe you put it in a salad port. I think that's going to be the biggest hurdle. And then with that comes, do we need to do some remodeling of the facility? Do you have an idea where you'd put that? Because that's an issue.
One thing that we were, and like I said, obviously it's against remodeling, but one of the ideas was the part of the salad port that's not being utilized for it. I think it's being like for evidence or they're holding cards in there sometimes. Is turning that into kind of like a central hub area where law enforcement comes in, they do their whole booking process. We put the fingerprint machine, we put the body scan machine in there, maybe a computer and whole system, you know, whatever. Because sometimes they do come into our booking area and utilize our, our working areas to complete their PCs and CC and stuff. But it was just an idea, is using that area, basically turning it into like a little central hub area and allowing law enforcement to do their whole process there. And then they come into the facility and they sort of process. But again, that doesn't, you know, go for the volunteers and the staff. And about the juvenile side of that was kind of in like a whole different area. It's the staff that come in through that other side, pass through that and then come to the booking area. Go to their, to their area where they want to do all their briefings and stuff. That was one of the ideas, but you know, again, it's, it's kind of hard to get, I mean, I guess it wouldn't be hard. But it would obviously pose a challenge for the staff to have to go around, come through, pass through and then. But obviously, you know, like in safety outweighs any kind of little minimal stuff like that. So that might just have to be the way we have to do it. So wherever we do put it, I want our staff and volunteers to pass through it that way.
And if it was to put in the salad port, is it, are these temperature sensitive devices? So you would have to do some insulation and do some revisions to that area. And if you put it in the front, then by getting entry with it, it becomes problematic to bringing prisoners out and so.
Yeah, definitely.
That's the biggest hurdle I see.
Yeah, I mean, that's one thing we're trying to make from this wire bill.
Commissioner Romero.
So I ask for a motion to approve the ability to add this to our legislative priorities. Let me proceed to the next item.
Right. If there's no other conversation, we will move to item C, which is the discussion, situation, decision regarding approval of resolution 2019-8 preventing and replacing resolution 2019-7.
So Mr. Chair, the only change to this was the addition of item seven. And I'll read it as where did body scanning device toss county detention facilities in need of a body scanning device to allow jail personnel to detect weapons and or contraband that could be smuggled into the detention facility. The body scan will offer proper legal search of detainments. That is my request.
Okay, motion. Motion approved. I'll second this motion. And second has been made, Ms. Martinez, please call home.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Blaind.
Yes.
Commissioner Fabro.
Yes.
Vice Chair O'Donnell.
Yes.
Chairman Hayes.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner Shangor for listening in, participating. I think that there was a good conversation inside the last week that kind of missed us to two more of this session going. So thank you for your, for your participation. The commissioners, the discussion regarding house counting, building detention center inspection report, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just going to read this report into the record as per statute 33-3-4.
Hold on a second. Hold on a second. Um, there was a, I'm sorry. Yeah, let me just say real quick, can we, I just got to see this this morning. It's a good report, but I do have some amendments I'd like to discuss with Commissioner O'Donnell and bring it up at the next meeting. I did attend the inspection for most of it with Commissioner O'Donnell. And so I have just some amendments that I would like to discuss with Commissioner O'Donnell and bring it back at the next meeting.
Okay. Can we do this, commissioners, us, Vice Chair O'Donnell? We have a discussion over the inspection that you guys done. And if there's anything that you have any trouble with, before you read your report in two minutes, if there's any other conversation amongst commissioners, we just have a discussion on the inspection report. So we have a conversation, this Commissioner Blankenhorn.
Yeah, I think that he's got some issues since it's his and Commissioner O'Donnell's inspection. I think they should air those out before we act on it.
All right, I'll bring this back then at the next meeting. And if any of you do have additions, please let me know and I'll work with Commissioner Blankenhorn to add his suggestions.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And as I did Vice Chair last year, my interaction within, for my time facility had to do with paperwork. The process of getting accredited and sharing with them experiences through my multi-line board. And I didn't go look for windows and light bulbs and things of that nature. I use my time for the, to make it more compliant and hopefully getting their heads up on potential lawsuits. So that's my, that I look forward to adding this back at the next meeting.
As far as further conversation and discussion, commissioners, I would hope that I can participate at some point today. Just to like conversation with tenants, maybe I'd be able to ask them what's going on and better understand your report between yourself and Commissioner Blankenhorn. Is there any other discussions I need, commissioners? Thank you, Vice Chair, for his comments and Commissioner Blankenhorn for your comments in this draft inspection report. I have E and F, and E is new business to be considered at a future commission meeting. Commissioners, any items you want to have added to the next meeting? Like a little contact inquiry. Commissioner, I do.
Hey, Chairman, I'm not sure next meeting or not. I'll leave it up to you guys to decide. But I would like another agenda item on the jail to discuss two items. One is what we can do to better help our inmates who have behavioral health issues. In addition to what we're already doing, which is quite good, thanks to Paul and Tammy back there and others. Namely that we are getting some diversion from the jail for those where treatment is more appropriate, which are key elements to cutting down recidivism, but the third... the third key element is reentry into the community, which is a whole nother program and I would like to discuss the possibility of Natales County to enter into a expanded reentry program. Anybody who is suffering from substance abuse, you know, treatment is the first step, but continuing a support of them for a month, if not years, after the treatment is crucial to cutting down the recidivism so that they don't, they're not on that cycle. So that would be one item and then the other is just general security issues, like to hear, of course, from Paul and Andrew and B Roy and I'd also like the sheriff to be included in that. So I'll leave it to the chair and the vice chair and the manager to consider that request.
Commissioners, any other future items for, next meeting? I think none. Thank you. Next item is item F, this is the commissioners announcing, any commissioners announce any things going on in the district or anything coming up, what could be amongst all of the municipalities across? I'll go ahead and ask for a adjournment. So, I'm sure it's been made, I'm sure you'd like to have a second question. Andrew. Thank you, commissioners, good hope, everyone holds their, they don't need to vote, I'll close in the papers, I say hi, and I, I suppose, there's more eyes, the eyes have, there is haven't, so we have a meeting.